Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education Meeting for November 6, 2023. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters related to the employment history of particular pedagogical employees, other individuals, and the YCT-CTATA contractual negotiations under the Taylor Law?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education Meeting for November 6, 2023. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence for armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the father of Carrie Colsey Satorelli, the father-in-law of Dan Satorelli, the father-in-law of Joe Puglisi, and the mother-in-law of Carolyn Castinelli?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, the God, the God of all, the reason for all.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. It looks like the middle school came to visit tonight.
Yes, this is a exciting presentation, one that I found very interesting and it's part of a unit of study in our science program. Really, really exciting, but it's interdisciplinary in so many ways. So this evening, we have four terrific students joining us. Mr. Nansen is here, Ms. Sibella is here, and our middle school administration is here, and we welcome Mrs. Horowitz, Ms. Copeland, and Dr. Rupchan here this evening. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Middle School Assistant Principal, Ms. Copeland, to introduce tonight's presentation. Ms. Copeland?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Hatter, Ms. Carbone, Central Administration, and all of the trustees for having us here tonight. On behalf of Mrs. Horowitz, the middle school is very excited to present to our first good news of the 23-24 school year. One of the most important things that we can do as educators is to create meaningful learning experiences for our students. I believe the project we are presenting today does just that for our sixth-grade Strang Eagles. Today, you will hear about how our students had an opportunity to research and analyze a natural resource right here in their local community. Through this project, students have developed a deeper understanding and empathy for local and global environmental issues. I'd like to invite Mr. Nansen, Ms. Sibella, along with their students, to present the sixth grade, sixth grade, it's a tongue twister, the Sixth Grade Stream Study Project.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, sixth-grade students Olivia Paperman, Dennis O'Sullivan, Thomas Mills, and Ophelia Chang, along with Ms. Sibella and I, will be sharing information from our recent biodiversity unit that culminated with a water quality study at Hunter Brook Stream in Yorktown. If you've ever eaten a meal or had a cup of coffee in New York City, chances are that the water used to prepare those at one point passed through Yorktown. The Croton Watershed, which consists of 375 square miles and which Yorktown is part of, currently provides roughly 10% of the city's water supply. Many consider it to be the best in the world. Ironically, the city runs parallel to what many consider the worst, the Hudson River. During my lifetime, the Hudson River has always been synonymous with pollution. But in 1655, a Dutch colonial author, Adrian van der Donck, wrote this about the Hudson: "The river is spacious and broad, clear and deep. Well-traveled observers compare it to the suburb Amazon River, for the other outstanding qualities of the river and the surrounding countryside."
Kevin Zawaki of Westchester Magazine wrote a juxtaposed piece in March of 2020. Ever since industrialization took hold on the Hudson's banks, the river's health has suffered tremendously. Sewage and chemicals have pervaded the waterway, disrupting ecosystems. Pollution became the norm, not the exception. Everybody looked the other way for decades, while the fish began to stink like oil, while people wouldn't let their children play near the river, while boats would be befouled by residue or oil. Regardless of our best intentions, human activities are the most common causes of water contamination. The human population is somewhere around 8 billion people and counting. This will, without a doubt, put a strain on all of Earth's resources and threaten even the most protected habitats like our Croton Watershed. If we do not monitor our waterways closely, we will, unfortunately, create negative impacts for many generations to come.
Hello, my name is Olivia Paperman. We're here tonight to discuss a simple way that people can learn about and monitor their local freshwater stream. It doesn't require a degree in ecology or a background in biological studies. The technique we use is called biomonitoring. Biomonitoring is simply studying the living organisms within a stream, in this case, benthic macroinvertebrates. To determine its overall health, we will discuss both the quantitative and qualitative data that our class recently gathered at Hunter Brook Stream and share it on the Clean Water Hub database. The database is maintained by the Isaac Walton League of America, which is a group of conservationists that pioneered this method of observing life in streams. Students at MESMS have been learning about this and applying these techniques within the sixth-grade science classroom since the 1980s.
Hello, my name is Thomas Mills. The living organisms we exam, oh wait, oh, oh yeah. The living organisms we examined while biomonitoring are called benthic macroinvertebrates. A benthic macroinvertebrate is a bottom-dwelling organism without a backbone that is large enough to see with the naked eye. Here are some specimens of macroinvertebrates we found at Hunter Brook Stream. Macroinvertebrates are used as bioindicators because they spend their entire lives within an area no bigger than the tables you are sitting at. Unlike a fish or other aquatic organisms, they don't swim away or avoid areas of pollution. Benthic macroinvertebrates are classified into three different groups called taxa based on their sensitivity to pollution.
Hello, my name is Dennis O'Sullivan. Taxa I macroinvertebrates, such as mayflies and stoneflies, are extremely sensitive to pollution. Taxa II, such as crayfish and damselflies, are somewhat sensitive to pollution, and taxa III are pollution tolerant. Our hope is to find a variety of species from all three taxa groups, which would indicate that the water is clean enough to provide life for even the most sensitive species. With that said, the absence of taxa I would indicate that the water may be polluted. Upon completion of a freshwater stream study, the total number of macroinvertebrate species from all three taxa groups are collected, added together, and compared to an overall benchmark. A score equal to or above a 23 is considered excellent.
Some of the macroinvertebrates we found at Hunter Brook Stream include catfish flies. I can't see the rest.
Basically, we found a collection of macroinvertebrates from all three taxes. When added together, gave us the value of a, of a over-excellent out of the 27. And we were able to put it on this database, so year after year, every consecutive class can sort of look back and see how the water has changed from year to year, so it'll be
Hello, my name is Ophelia Chang. Goal number six from the United Nations List of 17 Sustainable Development Goals is to ensure availability and sustainable management of water and sanitation for all. Biomonitoring is one way we can get closer to achieving that goal. As our data showed, we found a variety of macroinvertebrates from all three of the taxa groups. These findings, along with some favorable chemical testing results for pH, nitrates, and dissolved oxygen levels, confirmed that water flowing through Hunter Brook Stream is in excellent condition. In addition, sharing our data on the Clean Water Hub allows future classes to access it and compare and monitor their results with those from previous years and classes. Hopefully, our efforts will help ensure availability and sustainable water management for the future generations to come.
That was really, really impressive. Students, I'm going to ask you to come to the microphone, because I have two questions for you. Number one, your favorite thing that you learned in this unit of study? What, what did you learn? What did you enjoy learning? One thing.
So I enjoyed learning about pH and the stream study mostly because they had hands-on experience.
I enjoy, I enjoy learning about the different type of macroinvertebrates. I liked when we were just like having fun, just looking at all the macroinvertebrates.
Okay.
I enjoyed physically being able to like do experiments on what we were learning. That made it a lot, a lot more fun.
Okay. My other question that I had, and I was curious, I think I know the answer to this, but it's not often that you see middle school students put on the water boots, actually go into a stream, do real research, because quite often, in a middle school, you'll have books in front of you, and maybe you'll take a virtual trip on a, on a screen using Google Earth, but you were actually in the water, and you actually conducted real research. My question is, did you have fun?
Yeah, it was really fun. I liked it a lot.
I think the most fun part was, the most fun part was not falling in the water like everyone else's.
Just in case, just in case. Mr. Nansen, Ms. Sibella, I just want to thank you for making learning real, making it authentic. It would have been certainly understandable to do this from a book and to use web-based resources or some of the other resources that we have, but to bring it to life, take students out into the field, do this work hands-on, and hearing the students speak today and, and students, I was so impressed. Olivia, Thomas, Dennis, Ophelia, you were incredible, and I, and I thank you for presenting. And I say this every time with good news, we heard the science, we heard the content, but the other skill that we saw tonight is public speaking. The students came up in front of a microphone and spoke very confidently, were articulate, and I really felt like I understood the learning that, that you experienced. So students, thank you, Mr. Sibella, I'm sorry, Ms. Sibella, Mr. Nansen, thank you so much for stepping out of the box and, and taking our children into the field and making the learning experience so real, so engaging, so authentic. Mrs. Horowitz and to your team, thank you for supporting the vision and for supporting the work. It's absolutely incredible, and all I can say is keep it up. I'm so proud of you, students and teachers. Thank you.
We all know the Hunter Brook Stream. Anybody who lives in Yorktown knows Hunter Brook, so I'm so glad you got to go there, and I'm so glad you care about it enough to, to monitor its health. Anybody else want to? Freshman?
I was just going to say, great job, great job presenting, and a great job with the slides. Mrs. Reynolds and I are having a little debate as to what we are looking at. It's like transparent, and I think it's a vertebrae. So you help us identify what this is? It says number 10 on the chart, so should we kind of cheat?
Does that mean anything?
Yeah.
It's prettier than mine.
Yeah, we don't look at mice. There you go.
I don't know, I might, I might be able to rival yours.
Yes, and there's more on the back.
And while the students are identifying, I'd really like to thank our central admin and the Board of Ed for continuously supporting all of our projects and activities and field trips and hands-on activities that really help our students to learn. Thank you, Ms. Copeland, Dr. Rupchan, and the staff for all their hard work. Thank you, thank you all. Ron, do you want to take five minutes?
What we'll do is we'll take a brief five-minute recess. We know it's seven, you're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, we'd love to have you stay, but we understand that you have children with you, you have bedtimes, homework, and all other things to get ready for tomorrow, so we'll take a quick five-minute recess for anyone who wants to depart at this point. We'll resume the meeting in about five minutes.
Okay. All right. Well, Ron, that was certainly good news. Middle school's awesome. All right, we're up to our first public comment on agenda-related items, and nobody's signed up to speak, so we're going to move on to the superintendent's report. Go back to you, Ron.
Okay. So a few updates from the last time we met. I don't have a formal presentation on the capital project for this evening, because not much has changed since our last presentation and since the last Board of Education meeting. So we continue to meet, the steering committee is meeting tomorrow, so I anticipate that we'll have an update at the November 20th Board of Education meeting, but at this time, there really is no new information. I would certainly encourage any member of the community to go visit the website that we've developed to provide all of the information on the proposed capital project. It has an FAQ, it provides some scope to the project, it provides all of the presentations that have been given to date with the PowerPoints and certainly the narrative over it in the presentation at the board meetings, but more information certainly to come in two weeks from now when we have our next meeting. And I'm hoping that we can also discuss not just scope, but we can talk about the secret process, we can talk about the cost as well, we affixed some dollars, they were tentative. I'm hoping that we'll have some more definitive numbers for you at the next meeting, so we'll follow up on that. Two weeks ago, we also gave a presentation on modified sports and, and just kind of where we are with regard to modified sports. Since that meeting, it's been about two weeks, obviously, since that meeting, we have been researching offerings in neighboring communities, specifically in the Putnam, Northern Westchester, Bosse's, Ketchman area, because that's where modified sports competitions generally are. They're generally regional, you're generally within the location, there's not a whole lot of distant travel for that, so we've looked at what sports are offered, what schools are offered. We've also looked into a little bit in terms of the impact of the youth sports programs. We have developed some questions to a survey, I'll, I'll share more in the way of a draft, but a survey on modified sports is actually a very challenging survey, because as we discussed at the last meeting, there are some offsetting reductions that we would have to identify. So sure, in isolation, do you support modified sports? That question may be an easy one to answer, but once we attach what the ramifications would potentially be, then it becomes a little bit more complex, so we're still working through what the potential ramifications will be. I anticipate that we would include cost information during the budget development season, which is underway at this point. We have already begun our fiscal planning for the 24-25 school year. That work will begin in earnest after Thanksgiving, but we've certainly begun the preliminary work at this point for our budget development process. But more to come, again, on modified sports. I shared a list with our board just today, a short while ago, on what sports are offered throughout the region, fall, winter, spring, and also a potential survey that I'm still working through. With regard to other happenings around our school district, the fall athletic season has just about wound down. We begin winter sports officially on Monday. Again, congratulations to all of the fall student athletes on a very successful season in so many regards, and certainly the best of luck to all of our students who are participating in winter sports, and we wish them a great season, both in the gymnasium, on the track, and certainly in the classroom as well, because academics always come first. With regard to some other upcoming dates, our fall comedy is Play On. That will be in the high school auditorium, November 17th, November 18th, 7:00 p.m. There's no admission fee for the fall show, so if you're interested on a Friday or Saturday evening, November 17th, November 18th, 7:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium, the students in the drama club always put on such a great performance, it's free and open to the public, you're welcome to attend, we look forward to seeing you there. And then just some calendar updates, schools are closed this, this Friday in observance of Veterans Day. On Monday, November 13th, we have a superintendent's conference day, so for K-12 students on Monday, no students will report K-5 or parent-teacher conferences. We look forward to parents having the opportunity to meet with their child's teacher to discuss progress to date. And also, schools are closed for Thanksgiving recess Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. That's a little bit of a deviation, it hasn't changed in the calendar, the calendar has been consistent since the board adopted it last spring, but we have had half-days Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving. After an analysis of attendance on that day, we made the determination last spring to close for Wednesday, November 22nd, Thursday, the 23rd, and Friday, November 24th. So a busy month of November is ahead, we're still early in the month, there are going to be some great activities happening on our campuses, we encourage you to stop by, whether it's a preseason athletic event, whether it's a drama production, or whatever it is that interests you, please go to our website, take a look at the calendar of events, and if there's something that you think you and the children may enjoy, come on out, our students would love to have the support in the audience. And that concludes the update that I had prepared for you this evening.
Terrific, thank you. Did anybody have any questions? Okay. We go to board discussion item, or committee discussion. So the last board meeting, it was determined it's going to be the Educational Vision Committee. Catalina is on the committee, definitely, she wants to, she would like to chair it. We have to determine the other committee members. So who hasn't, I know Pete, you said you don't have, that's not one you're interested in, so I'm going to look over to this side of the room to see anybody who has interest on being on that committee. I'm assuming that means a no?
I mean, I'm already on policy, and audit policy meets, was meeting twice a month. We're taking a break from that over the holiday, but we expect that'll pick up again. I just don't have the capacity to add a third committee.
Okay, Cheryl?
I feel the same way, I'm in the same boat, I'm on, I'm actually the chair of the policy committee, and we've been meeting twice a month, and I'm on the steering committee, and that, you know, consumes most of my time, so I'd really like to leave it at that, so I can just continue to give my best to both of those committees.
Freshman?
So in terms of what committees I sit on, so I chair audit, and I'm also the liaison to the district PTSA that meets monthly, just a couple of broad thoughts. One, I think we might be able to scale more as a board if we incorporate some of the work that we're looking to do within our existing committees. Like I know, based on the survey, the other one that came back second was sustainability. And given that we have a $40 million bond coming up that we're looking at, some of that work could perhaps be incorporated into steering. You know, so I think if we can utilize the existing constructs that we have, I think we might be able to scale more as a board. I think we might be able to scale more as a board, you know, instead of trying to, you know, create. Like I think we might be able to use our available bandwidth more efficiently as well.
Mike?
Well, we discussed it at the last meeting. I suggested that if we needed a third person on the committee, that I would do it. It's not something I'm super interested in or I have a lot of experience with. But I already chair the fiscal advisory committee, and I'm on the steering committee. So, you know.
So you would be the third, so I would be the second. Okay. That's fine. No, I'm okay with it. So Catalina, go ahead, Pete.
Can I ask a question? Is there a requirement that we have to have three people or?
No, but usually it's more helpful because you can't always, you know, at least you have more than one person. You know, if a second can't show up, you have two people there.
Okay.
So Pete and I could, Mike and I could trade off. Catalina can chair it, and Mike and I can trade off.
Okay. But I thought this was gonna go down the path of there was only gonna be one person, so. Which is good. I'm glad you.
So Rashmi raised an interesting point. I mean, I'm still not entirely clear what the Educational Vision Committee would be and who would be on it and what its mission would be. And I'm really not entirely clear how it's different than a policy committee. So, you know, just like the sustainability could be incorporated into steering, I'm wondering if the, whatever the goals are of the Educational Vision Committee can be included in the policy committee, and then we don't need to form another committee.
I thought one of the understandings was that the educational vision, first of all, we don't quite know until the committee meets, until really what its scope is and what its vision is. But I thought they would be recommending things to go back to policy and other places where it needed to be. I mean, if at some point it needs to fold into policy, maybe it can. But I think at least it should be flushed out to be a standalone. I don't know, maybe that's just my thought. It should be flushed out to be a standalone. I don't know, Ron, what you think about, I know, to get the work done.
It's however ultimately the board chooses. You ultimately are seven people with commitments that you have to the board. The purpose was to take on larger topics that may bog down the work of the policy committee. So that was the genesis and the conception, because we did identify areas that were memorialized in policy that required some really extensive study as part of any policy update or review that we make. And that's where the conception, that's where the concept was born.
So it makes sense, because if Catalina chairs it and she's on the policy committee, she can be bringing the information back to policy as it kind of flushes out. No? Gotta bring it back to us, but then she sits on policy, so it's kind of a connection back and forth. I don't know.
Every committee brings back to the full board their recommendations. And from there, she's a natural link to the policy committee, yes. But let's not skip the most important step.
No, we all go back to the board. Pete, did you have anything to add?
Well, just that this is something very new, so it's gonna evolve into what it will be or won't be. And again, I always go back to the wellness committee. It evolved into something. It started as X and evolved into Y over a period of time. So that's what I envision this as, is something that is starting from its infancy and see where it goes based on the parameters that are set.
Right, okay.
Rashmi brought up a good point about sustainability and, you know, the bond projects and whatnot. Do you want to address how steering looks at that right now and how we incorporate it?
Steering has had discussions about sustainability, about making the projects as sustainable, bringing in the pieces that we can to address sustainability. Ron, I don't know if there's anything you want to add.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've looked at, with our architects and construction managers, based on their advice, on what's cost-effective and what would yield the most efficient and effective result, whether it's solar panels or heat pumps or LED lighting. The steering committee has looked at all of those. We haven't come to a final determination on what would be included in each of the projects. But that certainly is part of the conversation that we're having.
And I think part of the thing with the steering committee at this point is everything is conceptual at this point, because you can't really do any real work until a bond is passed. We're not allowed to by state law. So once it has passed, I mean, we do have those conversations at most meetings about what we can add and what we can't add and how we can address being more socially conscious, globally conscious about sustainability. So it is something we are very much working on.
That's great. I think it might help if the architects, like, give us a presentation on it, because I'm sure everyone would love to hear, you know, what the thoughts are. I do want to jump to audit, to the audit committee for a quick second. So my understanding is that Peter, you're not on audit anymore since the last meeting?
That is correct.
You're getting that look.
That's what I was told. Yes.
Okay. So the policy committee requires a minimum of two members, and we do have a third. So right now, in terms of trustees, it's Lisa Wall, myself, and we have John Gridley, who's a community member. So he's the third member on the committee. So we're, we meet the minimum requirements, but if anybody else is interested. Yes. But we are, you know, we have what we need, but if, you know, I always ask if anybody else.
One, two, three. One of those, because we're not on fiscal advisory.
Are you talking to me?
No. Catalina, no, you're, no, Catalina, Lisa or Cheryl.
And again, I, Lisa's already on. I don't want to pressure anyone, because we do have what we need. But I always open it up, so if you want to grade, if you don't want to, I get it. I don't serve donuts, unlike policy, I think, has cookies. So maybe I need to do something different.
Jackie, if nobody else wants to, I can always be like a substitute third on the audit committee.
No, but we don't do, we don't mix the fiscal advisory and the audit. That's why you're off, sir. One or the other.
You can always come back to audit.
Well, I think it's very well-covered.
Oh, thank you. What can I say now?
Are we good? So if somebody wants to join, they can, we can always, they can reach out to you, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course.
We're good?
Yep, of course.
So we have a plan? All right, we have a plan. Okay. Let's move on. We're gonna go to board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the October 23rd meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A policy adoption. A motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies and regulations. 4315 Health Education, 4526.1 Internet Safety, 4526.1 R, its regulation, 8133, the use of security systems, and 8133 R, its regulation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And a motion to delete the following exhibit from the policy manual. It's 1500E.1 Public Use of Facilities Agreement, Exhibit.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have first reads on the following policies. 0300 Accountability, 0350 Evaluation of Instructional Programs, 4321.2 Schoolwide Pre-Referral Approaches and Interventions, 4321.3 Allocation for Space for Special Education Programs, 4321.6 Availability of Alternative Format Instructional Materials for Students with Disabilities, 4730 Homework, 5314 Corporal Punishment, and 5605 Student Voter Registration and Pre-Registration for Students. Any questions or comments? That title on that last one sounds odd, doesn't it? Student Voter Registration and Pre-Registration for Students. Students, twice in the same title? Can you?
We can eliminate the last two words. Student Voter Registration and Pre-Registration.
That makes more sense, does it? Yeah, sounds better.
It's listed here. I just opened, it's listed as voter registration slash pre-registration for students. Is that the one you talked about?
Yeah.
So I think it's the PDF is maybe not.
Vote reg, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Just the title on the agenda.
Perfect, all right. That's fine. Does anybody have any questions or concerns with them? Nope? Okay, perfect. Personnel. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have appointments, tenure appointment, part-time appointments, and temporary appointments. Other compensation, we have extra duty, unpaid leave of absence, and a removal from the substitute list. And under classified personnel, we have a non-district funded stipend. In addition to the substitute list, police monitors, unpaid leave of absence, removal from the substitute list, and a resignation for the purpose of retirement.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Business office. A motion to adopt the attached 2024-25 Budget Development Calendar.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Result from recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the contract with Glen Island Harbor for the Yorktown High School 2024 Prom.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Xerox Financial Services. Be resolved that the Board of Education authorizes a board president to execute a cost-per-image lease-purchase agreement, including addendum and maintenance agreement with Xerox Financial Services, the lease of three additional copiers for 1130, 2023 through 1129, 2026 at a cost of $494.13 per month. A copy of such agreements shall be, including addendum and maintenance agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
Discussion?
Go ahead.
Lisa, can you just explain where this came from?
So there was a request made for greater access to color printing and copying at the elementary levels. So right now, we were using a lot of color printing, small printers. And it was, it was recommended that we switch to color copiers and send our color prints there. The cost per print is much cheaper, much more cost-effective. So the goal is to transition away from color printers to color copiers. So one, each elementary building will be getting one color copier so that we can start that transition.
Are we then removing the other printers?
Yes, and as they slowly die off, we will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Blue Path Service Dogs. Motion to approve the agreement with Blue Path Service Dogs for the 23-24 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ron? Can you talk about this?
Yeah. So this year, we initiated the concept of innovation grants. We call them I-grants. Faculty and staff have really taken to them and have applied for very impressive ideas that they have. It's part of our theme of telling one's story. And the Blue Path Service Dog Agreement is something that our faculty and staff in 812 classroom settings are very passionate about. And so they pooled together, submitted an application to have the therapeutic service dogs make visits to each of our five schools. And there's just so many benefits to this partnership with Blue Path. And this is a contract that we're asking you to approve, resulting from the, our teachers showing initiative and applying for an innovation grant. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge all of the teachers in our 812 classes. They really coordinated well with the leadership of their building principals, Ms. Almeida, Ms. Rudick, and the PPS office to bring this opportunity to our classrooms. I'm looking forward to welcoming Blue Path to our district, and that'll start in December of 2023, so next month.
Terrific, thank you. Those I-grants are great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? SECR. I have to read this, guys. So notice of intent to serve as lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and its implementing regulations. Whereas a Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District is considering a proposed district-wide capital improvements project to include additions, construction, reconstruction, site work, infrastructure improvements, and renovations, including original furnishings, equipment, machinery, apparatus, apertures, and incidental improvements in expenses in connection with, at Brookside, Mohansick, Crompon, Mildredes Strang Middle School and Yorktown High School, the scope of which is listed in Exhibit A attached heretofore and made part of this resolution. And whereas the project requires that an environmental review be conducted in compliance with Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law and its implementing regulations at 6 NYCRR, Part 617, collectively the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. And whereas the Board desires to take all actions necessary in connection therewith in order to comply with SECR, and whereas the Board believes it should be designated as the lead agency for the purpose of determining the determining the environmental impact of the project, it intends to declare itself the lead agency and conduct a coordinated SECR review of the project. And whereas the Board has considered the project in light of the actions to be included on the Type 1 list specified in Section 617.4 of the regulations, and in light of the actions included in the Type 2 list specified in Section 617.5 of the regulations, and preliminarily classifies a project as a Type 1 action. Whereas Part 1, I'm, I'm, Part 1 of the fully, fully, full environmental assessment form was prepared by the Board's consultants. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby declares, based upon its record before and under the applicable standards of SECR, the project is classified as a Type 1 action, and that term is defined in the regulations. It's, two, its intention to designate the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District as the lead agency for the purposes of determining the, determining the environmental impact of the project. And three, this resolution will take effect immediately. And be it further resolved that the Board hereby authorizes its consultants to solicit lead agency status on behalf of the Board by expeditiously circulating a copy of this resolution, including exhibits and any other supporting documentation to potential involved and interested agencies, a copy of which is attached heretofore as Exhibit B. These agencies will be given up to 30 days from the sending of the lead agency notice to consent. Interested agencies will be given notice, but will not be required to consent pursuant to the regulations. The contact person at the Yorktown Central School District is Lisa Sanfilippo, our Assistant Superintendent for Business.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Sure.
Say what?
This is SECR. Go ahead, Lisa.
So whenever you undergo a capital construction project, the district is obligated to perform a SECR review, which is to study the potential environmental impact. And in most cases, when you're just doing a renovation inside the buildings, you can make a negative declaration of any potential environmental impact because you're not changing the footprint or you're not disturbing any property around the building. But in this case, it's considered a Type 1 action because we are potentially installing turf fields. There could be some environmental impact. So it is our responsibility to do a study of that, which we have done, and to notify other agencies that could potentially be involved to see if, to solicit, to solicit their feedback regarding potential environmental impact.
And also, we are, we are adding additions to three buildings.
Yes, and additions to three buildings, correct. So this is just the beginning of the process. Then we put all these other agencies on notice that this is what we're potentially thinking about, solicit feedback, and then the Board of Education can make a final determination as to the environmental impact of this project.
And that ultimate determination, is that announced at a board meeting? That's public information?
Yes. So that will, that will be forthcoming, depending on what we find.
And when do we anticipate that will be?
So right now, our architects and their consultants have conducted a preliminary environmental assessment form. That's also gonna be circulated. But it's, the potential exists for more impacts to be studied once the bond gets approved, and we have to seek permits. And any sort of mitigation would be discussed at that time once we get approval of the project.
We have to be aware, like, when we talk about the fields, that all that water towards the back is still kind of in a watershed water area. When we did the Lake Yorktown, as I call it, the field up at the top on 202, we had to have DOH and, no, Department of.
DEC.
DEC was involved.
Army Corps of Engineers are involved. There are a lot of eyes looking at the work that we're doing, for good reason. There are a lot of eyes looking at what we're doing.
Right. So this, it's just a legal review we have to go through.
Jackie, is there a statute of limitations on, like, previous work? Like, we've done environmental studies before. So are they project-specific or?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are project-specific.
Is everybody good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think it was me. Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, special ed. A motion arrange the following placements as of November 6, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations at Mohansik, $1,400 in Mohansik PTA for the Impact Education Star Lab program, $700 in Mohansik PTA for the basketball now and long ago program, at Brookside, admission for a first-grade trip to Yorktown Stage from the Brookside PTA, and admission for a kindergarten trip to the Tarrytown Music Hall from the Brookside PTA.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are up to board comments. Peter?
Just another wonderful presentation, and it just continues to impress me, our students' ability to public speak, and it's wonderful to see at every grade level.
Thank you. Catalina?
I agree. I even saw two, the two girls were giving thumbs up every time somebody stepped off, so really, that encouragement, I said, Peter has to give me a thumbs up every time I speak now. So it was really nice to see that. Thank you.
Mike? Rashmi?
So a couple of thoughts. One, I wanted to make a suggestion on if we could get, maybe in the springtime, Dr. Hatter, like, some of the I-grand recipients here to just, you know, if we could kind of group them together in whatever logical, you know, manner you think it's appropriate, we would just love to hear and see what, you know, what's going on, and I think it's awesome, I think the idea is great, and, you know, it's just, I would just love to know more. And then to everyone that's celebrating Diwali this weekend, happy Diwali, wishing you the best of everything.
Sure.
Yes, I'll definitely echo thoughts on the presentation tonight. I like when our teachers go that extra mile and have a hands-on type of experiment or field trip. It's always nice when it's coupled with an in-class instruction, because I think it really reinforces the instruction, as well as providing sort of that social piece that you don't always get in a classroom, because, you know, you have to just go, move forward with the rigor of the lesson. So I think there are so many lessons and so much to be absorbed from those, you know, off-site visits. I also wanted to say thank you, I believe it was the state regionals last week we hosted for soccer, state regionals, I believe that was the right classification. I think those are really nice events, although Yorktown wasn't in it, I was at the game, because my nephew played in it, but I always think it's nice that we step up and offer our facilities for those events. So I'd like to thank, you know, our administration, especially Dr. Hatter and Rob Barrett, and also the people we had working that night. It was a very cold night, and we had people come forward and monitor the gate and, you know, security and everything, so thank you for offering those opportunities to Section 1. I think that's a really nice thing. Hopefully next year, you know, we'll be there.
Lisa?
Yeah, I'll just echo everything everybody said, and also just add, Dr. Hatter, thank you for giving the teachers the leeway to do that kind of event, that they can go take the kids to this dream, and, you know, looking at those things on a card, piece of, I'm gonna have nightmares about it, you know, on just a card, that's one thing, but then to actually see it and match it up, and the kids, when Rashmi asked, came over, and they were all really trying to figure out which one it was, I mean, it really does make a big difference, so thank you for giving them that opportunity.
Yeah, you got, you got the leash. No comment. No, it was wonderful. I'm glad, I love good news, it is always the best part of the meeting, and I'm just so glad to see our students and see how they're enjoying their learning, so it was wonderful, so thank you. Anyway, we're good? We are up to our final public comment. Does anybody sign up to speak? Nope. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night, everyone.